At this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Walsh Legger.
Here.
Trustee Ludke.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
President Fannerstil. Here. At this time, if you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there is anybody that would like to provide public comments for items that are not on the agenda, they can do so at this time by stepping towards the podium. Seeing as there are no public comments, we will move to our first order of business, which is a proclamation for Rob Little. This is a proclamation in recognition of nine years of service to the Village of Heartland, to Rob Little. Whereas Fire Department employee Rob Little has loyally served the Village of Heartland residents for nine years as a firefighter, instructor, and officer. Whereas Rob Little has provided excellence in customer service as he filled the role of captain and division chief of fire while serving the needs of fire and emergency scene victims and Heartland Fire Department staff while performing life and property saving efforts. And whereas, Rob Little has demonstrated dedication to Heartland's residents by providing quick and ready-for-action responses day and night for the past nine years, always ready and proud to serve those in need. And whereas, Rob Little has been an asset to our community, and while he will be missed, his retirement after nine years of service is well deserved. Now therefore, the village board of the Village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to Rob Little upon his retirement and encourages all residents and staff to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for his service. Rob, thank you. Rob. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The mic is yours. The floor is yours. You can use the whole room.
I have a couple more for you, Chief. Cindy Duco, on behalf of Representative Cindy Duco, who dropped us off earlier, is not feeling too well tonight. She wants to present to you, whereas Robert Little, Division Chief of the Heartland Fire Department, has commemorated for his nearly 30 years of distinguished service. And whereas, serving on the Fire Department embodies an individual's commitment to safety and well-being of the community. And whereas, Robert Little demonstrated the qualities of leadership, bravery, and dedication while serving on the Lancaster Fire Department for over 22 years, seven as a fire chief, then continued to serve on the Heartland Fire Department since March of 2011 as a fireman and an emergency services instructor, a division chief, a captain, and assisting with fire training for all fire personnel. And whereas, Robert Little has made personal sacrifices and placed his safety on the line for the good of all. Now therefore, Representative Cindy Duco, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Assembly, with the concurrence of Senator Chris Kapenga, under Assembly Rule 97, hereby congratulate Rob Little for his unremitting service to the community of Heartland and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Wow. Thank you.
I have another one here from Senator Kapenga for you.
I have the ultimate... I brought my truck. Present for you, on behalf of the Village of Heartland, we'd like to thank you and the Fire Department for your dedicated, committed service and your tireless efforts to continue to keep us strong and move forward and in helping us design ladder trucks and rescue trucks and selling us on good ideas that will benefit the community for many, many years to come. Appreciate it. On behalf of the department, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One more. One more. For you to enjoy, I'm not even sure the name of it. It looked good, so I thought I should...
I quit yesterday.
Did you? Oh, okay.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. The mic is yours.
Oh, really? I gotta talk?
Oh, yeah.
Hello? Jack, one, two.
Is that even on?
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
Still that...
The people can't hear you, but the camera can.
Got it. Well, I actually prepared a three-page speech tonight. Is that okay? Or...
The floor is yours.
No, I'm just kidding. I just want to take this opportunity to, first off, introduce my wife publicly and thank her for her commitment to supporting me. We just celebrated our 11 years. Please stand so everybody knows who you are. Tanya, without her support and my children, our kids, this would be even a tougher job. She knows when I come home and been on a bad call, she knows it's probably a good time just to step back and leave me alone for a while. And she doesn't even have to ask. Everybody should understand that at 3:00 in the morning, when the pager goes off, I get up, so do our spouses. They're up and worrying about us the entire time that we're gone, so they don't get much sleep either. So, thank you very much for supporting me. I want to thank the Fire Department, all my brothers and sisters, for all your support throughout the years. Hopefully, I hope you understand that I had your back, and I want to thank you for having mine. Appreciate all the friendship and support. And thank you to the village and for all the kind words. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Rob.
As is customary at these events, anybody that would like to stay and enjoy the entertaining board meeting may do so. Anybody that would like to proceed and begin celebrating may also do that. It's up to you.
Because I should stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone, running a little late. Run a little late.
All right. The next item that we have on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve village board minutes for the November 25, 2019, meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $500,814.81.
I'll move to approve vouchers for payment of $500,814.81.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Stay.
That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve, or at least discuss, actions related to licenses and permits. We have consideration of the... I'm getting to them. Bartenders and operators licenses expiring June 30, 2020. This is for Eliar Kirkini, Tricia Cabal, and Charles Galabinski.
I make the motion we approve the three as named.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve those bartender/operators licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item in the licenses we have is a Class B beer license. This is for the American Legion Flanagan Dorn Post 294. The location is Nixon Park Canteen. The agent is William Lay. The documents were completed. Do we have a representative for them here? No? That is the application.
I'll make a motion that we approve the license application.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve that application. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. At this... Public hearing is for that license?
Yes.
Okay. We have to have a public hearing on that license. I'm sorry that I skipped over that. I went right through the list. So while it has been passed, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for anybody that wants to speak regarding the license. We'll give it at least like 20 seconds to give us the full... We don't have anybody in the room that would like to speak, so at this time, I will close that public hearing, and I apologize to the board for my not getting that in there. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to adopt bill for an ordinance 1111, 2019, a village board ordinance adopting the Village of Heartland Comprehensive Development Plan.
I make a motion to adopt the bill 1111, 2019, for village of... The village board ordinance adopting the Village of Heartland Comprehensive Development Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the village board ordinance adopting the Village of Heartland Comprehensive Development Plan. Any discussion?
Yeah, this... The only problem... I understand the plan. We have to have some for the state, but this plan doesn't recognize Heartland. It doesn't talk to any about the things that we have to develop here, a river, parks, different things. So, you know, it's just disgusting that we're trying to... You have to pass something because the state says you have to have a plan to do what you're going to do in the future, even though it's not what you're going to do in the future. So, my only comment.
Okay. Any other?
Well, I sat on that board, and the other board members all live here in Heartland. And we did our best to make that plan to what we best felt, and everybody on the board best felt, that, you know, in the next 10 years, what Heartland wanted.
I think you did a good job on making the plan, and you answered the questions the state wants you to answer, and you set it up the way the state wants you to set it up. That was my point. The flexibility of doing things was not there for the uniqueness of Heartland.
Well, there's still flexibility in the plan, though. It's not... It's just a plan.
Oh, sure.
So if we want to change something in it, if something comes along where we want to develop the river further, if we want to develop something else further, it just comes before the board, and we have an opportunity to change the plan. It's just more of a guideline on what we're going to do. So, I felt that it was a good plan for, you know, the basis for what we wanted for Heartland. And I'm not opposed to, in the future, if something comes up that we all agree that it would be better for Heartland to go in a different direction, changing it.
There are some people who think that's set in stone. They don't understand it's just a guideline.
Right. That's true.
Any other? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We have the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. I believe it. We got at least four, didn't we? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of a motion to approve the contractor's application for payment number two for the Crystal Drive Lift Station modifications in the amount of $18,600.
I am here representing the DPW and looking for consideration to approve the contractor's partial amount of $18,600. This work consists of the gas and electric hookup to the generator. It's a load testing of the generator, and it's also training some DPW staff. And Ruker Demelke and the Department of Public Works is satisfied with this completion of the work, and we are looking for a release of $18,600 to Hogan Electric Incorporated.
I'm just going to add, and I'm sorry, I did not email you before this, but I'm just going to ask, how many more payments or how many more processes are involved before we would be to the point where we're done? You know, we're up and running. It's ours, and they are out of the picture.
So, right now, we created a punch list for them, so they have some repairs to do and tidy up. They're not going to be able to do landscaping until the spring. And then they also have ultimate training with all of our staff, and that'll be coming up shortly, in the next couple of weeks.
So, right now, there's some that are trained up on it already?
Correct.
I'm guessing you've been involved in that quite a bit.
Yes.
So, we're covered regardless of that way, but in time, quite a few more people will be trained on...
The whole staff will be trained.
Okay. Awesome.
We'll also have a retainage ultimately. How long do we hold that retainage?
A year?
I believe it's a year, yes.
So, he'll come back in, and still a year from now, asking for the final payment once we're comfortable in the warranty.
Once the warranty runs out on some of the stuff, that's when we normally get that back.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Felkner.
I make the motion that we approve the contractor's application for payment number two for the Crystal Drive Lift Station modifications in the amount of $18,600.
I make the motion that we approve the contractor's application for payment number two for the Crystal Drive Lift Station modifications in the amount of $18,600. The discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve payment to Thunder Road LLC for crack sealing in the amount of $82,365.
So, on this, the village board approved application of 66,000 pounds of crack sealing material. Due to the weather, they only installed 43,000 pounds. So, we're looking for a partial payment of $82,365 to Thunder Road LLC. They stated to us that they will hold the price at $1.90 per pound, and they will come in first thing in the spring of 2020 and finish the roads that they have not completed. So, we are looking for a release of a payment of $82,365 to Hogan Electric Incorporated.
I'm just going to add, and I'm sorry, I did not email you before this, but I'm just going to ask, how many more payments or how many more processes are involved before we would be to the point where we're done? You know, we're up and running. It's ours, and they are out of the picture.
So, right now, we created a punch list for them, so they have some repairs to do and tidy up. They're not going to be able to do landscaping until the spring. And then they also have ultimate training with all of our staff, and that'll be coming up shortly, in the next couple of weeks.
So, right now, there's some that are trained up on it already?
Correct.
I'm guessing you've been involved in that quite a bit.
Yes.
So, we're covered regardless of that way, but in time, quite a few more people will be trained on...
The whole staff will be trained.
Okay. Awesome.
We'll also have a retainage ultimately. How long do we hold that retainage?
A year? I believe it's a year, yes.
So, he'll come back in, and still a year from now, asking for the final payment once we're comfortable in the warranty.
Once the warranty runs out on some of the stuff, that's when we normally get that back.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Felkner.
I make the motion that we approve the contractor's application for payment number two for the Crystal Drive Lift Station modifications in the amount of $18,600.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contractor's application for payment number two in the amount stated of $18,600 for the Crystal Drive Lift Station. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve payment to Thunder Road LLC for crack sealing in the amount of $82,365.
So, on this, the village board approved application of 66,000 pounds of crack sealing material. Due to the weather, they only installed 43,000 pounds. So, we're looking for a partial payment of $82,365 to Thunder Road LLC. They stated to us that they will hold the price at $1.90 per pound, and they will come in first thing in the spring of 2020 and finish the roads that they have not completed. So, we are looking for a release of a payment of $82,365 to Thunder Road LLC.
Dave, did you get a chance to go out there and look at the work that they did?
Some of it. I only hit one road. I hit over my Renton area, and what they do is they go grind it, and then they blow it with a compressor, and then clean up the joints, and then what they do is come in and seal it.
I saw him doing it. I was just wondering if you looked at the work.
Yeah. Yes, we have.
So, basically, on this spreadsheet, green means it's complete. Yellow, there's only two, and it says routed. I take it that that's when they routed it out. My question is that, should it have been left routed versus... Routing, to me, means more of a dip, so more water can stay in there.
So, what they should have done is... You are absolutely 100% correct. They shouldn't have routed it. They should have just left it as a crack.
Right.
So, either way, water is going to get through there?
It's going to like be a reservoir for water, a little bit more, since it's routed out versus...
You're probably correct.
Okay. All right. And the white, I take it, are what's left?
Correct.
That hasn't been completed. Okay. Now, spring a good time to do that?
Yes.
Versus summer?
So, you want to do it spring and fall, because the asphalt is cool yet, and it's expanding, so your joints are the biggest, your cracks are the biggest. In the summer, it expands and it tightens them.
Okay. Okay. All right.
With that question being brought up, do you feel comfortable? If it was something that was going to cause... And I'm just... Sorry, I'm just piggybacking off of your question. If it was something that was... Well, in a perfect case, it would have been left a crack. Are you confident or pretty confident that it will end up being fine? They'll end up crack filling it, and most likely, it'll be fine.
We're helping. So, here's the situation. The situation is, obviously, the weather is so cold now, you can't keep that tar hot.
Right.
So, you're not going to put anything in there anyways. So, they're comfortable. They're experts, and they said they were comfortable with leaving it the way it is.
Okay.
So, we go along with them.
What's usually the warranty on this? Or is there one, or is it seasonal?
Seasonal.
Okay. All right. Any other? You done?
I...
Okay. I was going to make a motion, but I didn't want to.
Unless anybody else would like to speak in discussion?
I would entertain a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve payments for Thunder Road LLC for crack sealing in the amount of $82,365, which is a partial payment.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that payment to Thunder Road LLC for the crack sealing. That's been done for $82,365. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Dave, thanks for everything you do, and that you guys for DPW are doing. Seriously. And I think the whole board, I mean, really, I think sends those sentiments. You guys are staying on top of things, and it's appreciated.
Yeah, for sure, Dave. Thanks. You bet.
Next item we have is a discussion related to parking on East Industrial Drive. This was an item that we had brought up at one meeting, but there definitely needed to be some more looking into. Mr. Felkner, I... Being an expert in multiple areas, I do believe that this was one area that you looked into, so I just, if you could, not only for viewers that are watching now that may not have seen the last meeting, but also for the board again, you had given some advice, suggestions, you know, and then we'll... I just... We brought it back up so that we had time to look at it again, but if you want to tell us what's going on over there.
Can I comment before you start? I drove by the other day, and I actually took pictures. There were three semis parked, and one of them was, I would say, to me, would be blocking the driveway into that building, the office building, you know, right at the turn. You know what I'm talking about?
665.
And I can see where now they are going to... If they can't park on the corner, I couldn't believe how bad it was, that they're going to start parking in front of that building, and they are going to block those driveways. I think we need to put it all the way past those two drives.
So, we talked about... Chief Misko and myself, we were talking that we were going to do from Retlaw's driveway up to the first driveway of 665 South Industrial to take away the blind spot when you're heading westbound, because you can't see anything coming from the racket club. So, we installed three poles and ordered the three signs, per the board's requests. And I guess the discussion here is whether we continue on and put more signs between there, or we let this play out, and let's see if this relieves a traffic problem.
Well, in my opinion, I haven't gone over there to see it happening. I know we do have a board member for sure that was seeing it happening. Trustee Myers asked for it to be looked into. I know that Trustee Anson had provided some comment regarding something to do with backing in. I'm not an expert over there, and for this board, I almost... Or for myself, I shouldn't... I can't speak for the board. I almost want to kind of leave it on you guys a little bit to figure out, because it seems like it's going to be a step-by-step type of process. You don't want to take away so much parking. At the same time, you want ultimate safety, and we don't want people getting hurt on that blind curve from just what the pictures that I saw and having driven on the road, not while that's going on. I'm not sure what the actual solution is. I think this might be touch and go, but I want to leave it to people that are there seeing it on a regular basis. I'm not. So, I can provide comments saying, for me, I'm comfortable with you guys doing what you think is right. That would... I'm not making a motion. I'm just saying, for me, I feel like it's going to be a step-by-step process where we may do one thing, and then because of that, how people doing deliveries and where they're parking react, all of a sudden, something else gets done. But as opposed to having to wait months and having lots of conversations, I don't know if we can trust the people, you know, our safety departments and our Department of Public Works to work together to figure out what's best. I don't know what the exact solution is here. It seems like this one's going to be a... You know, there's going to be a... We're going to do something, and then there's going to be an effect of that, then we're going to do something, and it's going to take a little while to get to what's right. But I'll, you know, yield the floor now, but I just...
So, the PD and the DPW were contacted by a business owner to look into the blind spot. So, these three signs being posted there, that's what we're trying to cure, is the blind spot. If we take away that blind spot, hopefully, it'll relieve some pressure for the semis to back up into that business.
And I think we even said we'd be fine with semis on the wrong side of the street facing...
Just so they can unload.
Yep.
Because as of right now, they already go into 665's driveway to use that as a backup to get into the loading dock.
They park the wrong way currently, too. It's two different things. The one that's... Where they receive supplies, rather, or not supplies, but more or less items that they use internally, that's backed in the front of their building. The other stuff goes around the back and around to the side, and the semis are all bringing the supplies, the drywall and the metal and all that stuff going around the far side. So, it's improved. In fact, there were some people parking on the north side and the west side last week. And just... We just have the signs up, or the poles up. The poles scare them. With no signs on them. So, I think just seeing them putting signs on there just to see if it... Let's try that. That's a first.
I agree. I think we should do a stair step thing, because my concern is, if you put too much, then where are they going to go? They're going to go down somewhere else and create more problems, heading to somewhere else, second location.
That's an idea we bring to, to see how they go, especially with you seeing it daily.
So, that being said, the three signs are ordered, and they'll be in the middle of next week.
It's one of them, yeah.
DPW will install them.
And this board already had moved to order them, put the poles in, because the fear was... However, at first, we were thinking, no, we can't put the poles in, or someone was saying, we can't put the poles until we have the signs, so we're like, let's get...
Well, we were concerned that we might not get the poles in.
Right.
Because of the frost.
And this board already had moved to order them, put the poles in, 'cause the fear was, however, at first we were thinking, no, we can't put the poles in. Or someone was saying, we can't put the poles until we have the signs, so we're like, let's get those.
Well, we, we were concerned that we might not get the poles in.
Right.
Because of the frost.
So it would be up, if, since that action was already taken and those signs are going up, I'm just clarifying for the board that if someone were to make an action beyond that tonight, they absolutely can. Uh, but I don't, you know, those signs are already, have been actioned on.
The next two items, we just had discussion, only we didn't put any action. We could do action on future meetings.
Right.
If somebody did.
Yeah, I think we're fine right now.
We just wanted to make sure, bring it for discussion, just.
Right.
Both these items had some discussion.
Keep a close eye on.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we should have it on the next agenda, just to bring it up again to see what's happening, if anything, there's change, if the signs will be there next week.
Captain Kelsey, Police Department's all right with, you know, the semis parking facing traffic, right, for a little bit?
Captain Stacy Kelsey of the PD. Um, we just recommend with data, as far as just that minimal corner.
Yep.
Because, um, like Trustee Connor said, if you start putting more signs out, you're gonna start causing a problem potentially down, or, um, in other driveways or other businesses. So we just want that corner more visible, and that's what we're looking for. So as long as it says, like, no parking, no standing, no stopping on that corner, I think that's gonna relieve the problem, so.
Where do we think they're gonna start parking then and waiting?
We're gonna find that out. Yeah, I, I don't know, I have more to do.
I don't know, but I, but if you start clearing that whole part of the roadway, right?
Oh, I understand, I understand, I'm just, yeah, 'cause I drive it every day.
Mm-hmm.
I think ultimately they'll come in a different way and, and just park almost facing west. That way they can just pull in and back in, we'll see.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Almost towards the post office side of the.
Have we talked to the businesses themselves?
I think, yeah, I think the police.
The police chief said that they had a officer during the day talk to all the businesses.
Okay, okay, just so they know it's not.
They're all aware of it, yes.
Okay, good.
That is something that we're gonna keep, or I think the board wants to keep in, um, you know, keep in the discussion also. You don't wanna, it can become very troublesome for the businesses if people have to, um, uh, de-tarp their trucks too far away, now trucks with everything already strapped down. I mean, they could do that a mile away. You know what I mean? Take the tarp off, roll it up, and then take it in. I, I don't know what the solution is on this, but that can be difficult for the businesses, 'cause all of a sudden for the businesses, it's, well, we're, you know, I don't know if they would charge them extra, but sometimes that kinda thing can happen. It's like, well, you can, you're in an odd situation, so we have to charge you extra for dropping that delivery off because whatever. I don't know exactly, maybe they're just staging, I, I don't know exactly what's going on over there, but I, I don't know what's gonna happen. I know that they're gonna try to do the easiest way possible as a, as a truck driver, because if you're parked a mile away or a half a mile away, you do not wanna take the chance that someone else dropping their load after you were waiting there first, but, um, I don't know.
So we'll put it on the next agenda for discussion and possible considerations, in case there is anything on, we'll, we'll do it on the thirtieth, if that's all right? Add it to that agenda?
Okay.
Do you wanna maybe reach out to the business owner? Business owners, to see if they can come in and give us some of the input?
Maybe we should wait, save that for January.
Save it for the end one, yeah.
Because this one with the holidays and that, probably won't be nearly as much traffic there.
If you'd like, please, Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Do you want this on the next agenda or January?
Do you want just that, that particular business?
Yeah.
It gives a little bit more time.
Whatever you think, fit. Whatever you think we're doing.
When are you expecting the signs?
Uh, mid next week.
Next week, sorry.
I'll do January then.
Okay.
Shoot it for either the ninth or the twenty-third, I think those are the two dates, could be.
Perfect.
Okay, that item was just for discussion, so I think everybody has their directions. Um, like I say, I'm just not an expert there. I think that's gonna be a tough one, just because the curve, honestly, there's, there's only one solution that totally alleviates the problem, and that's chopping a chunk of property off and adding fifteen feet of shoulder. That, yeah, that's about the only, then, obviously, we don't want that to gain legs, that part of the discussion, 'cause that costs a lot of money. If we cannot go down that road. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to touch on, on that part of the agenda? Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
They don't live.
So the next item on the agenda, uh, is discussion related to crosswalk safety throughout the village. Along with this, uh, there was one in particular that was brought up, uh, one crosswalk that was brought up last time, which is, I believe, right by Sitco.
Maple and?
Down further.
Chief, Chief Dean, you had brought up, so we wanted to get it on the agenda. It's on the agenda so we can talk about it, so anything that we wanna talk about with these. I do know, just as a, a lead-in, I, I believe that we had asked for these to, like, an eye to be kept on them, and I believe PD was looking into them and DPW just to kinda keep an eye on, and I'm sure you guys are driving by them also. I'm not sure exactly how often things are happening there, but I know some, we were talking about a sign. But this discussion, we can also talk about other crosswalks also, or whatever, anything regarding crosswalks, so, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, too, that I did look back, because I thought when we had the discussion when that gentleman was here, we asked about the center crosswalks that we got in front of Palmer's and that, and decided that we could utilize them in that area as well, but unfortunately, because of the cold weather, we picked them up right after that, so they were never put down there, 'cause we picked up all the other ones for the plows. So it was addressed.
Yes. It's on its share. Well, it was addressed, and they were gonna, we were gonna, we as a village were gonna put those on Maple?
Yes.
Perfect, that's great, I think that's wonderful, to slow that traffic down. I didn't know that had been approved by the board.
We did talk about putting them in there that meeting when that gentleman was here, but then we picked them all up.
Excellent. Which, which crosswalk on Maple?
It's the crosswalk at, um.
Maple and Capitol?
Warren, no.
Warren.
Oh, so it's, okay, the one when you're getting towards Nixon, that has crosswalk lines, but doesn't have the signs?
Correct, correct, it's only one there that doesn't. And that was what the gentleman had approached, um, the board for, and he approached the fire department on some type of safety standard to be put in there. I personally, as fire chief, would like, I like to hear that, I like those center, I know they're paying for the DPW, um, crew to, removing in the winter time, right? But it slows everybody down, 'cause we see an increase in accident, people just aren't paying attention, unfortunately.
Well, to be honest, that's our thing, we took those signs out right now, and I walked across today and three cars, four cars just went through. If, if those signs aren't in the road, people are gonna stop.
And I'm really happy.
Can't leave them out there with plowing.
Right.
Yeah, well, I'm really happy to hear that, that was brought up and.
And we could look around the rest of the village, too, and see where they should be put in there, in the crosswalk, if there's a lot.
There is one crosswalk that I think we should get rid of completely. We had, a couple of us had talked about it during, uh, Holiday Train. There's a crosswalk right on this side of the train tracks. Um, the north side of the train tracks, there's two crosswalks, and the one that's closest to the train tracks is really dangerous.
Because it's just over the hill?
Yeah.
I think it leads from the, to the park.
Yeah, it leads, right.
That's the only reason there's that, 'cause it's part of the walking.
But if we just changed it, that we use the one just a little bit farther away, it gives a car that much longer coming over the top of the hill, you know, to actually stop and slow down. Neither one of them are in a great place. Because of that hill coming over the tracks, but that first one's really dangerous.
It's just past the train delineators, right?
Right. And I get why it's there, because it's a direct cross from the path that goes into Nixon. People would have to make a jog and then come over and then go back again, but.
My feel with that one is if a, if a semi is coming over, even though they're not supposed to be driving there, if a semi is coming over and has to stop, or a moving truck, something like that, and they have to stop because people are crossing, they're in the, that's, that's one thing that I have with that. And we do have one that's a little ways down.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe that's something we can.
And we actually watched people, and I have, 'cause I got the bar right there, if they do cross there, I've watched cars stop, even if somebody's turning down palling, and cars will park right in the middle of the tracks.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah.
And, and it's something, we definitely could look into more signs. Do you have an idea? I, I know it's a lot of work pulling those, but a cost, they're a couple hundred bucks a sign, I believe.
With a rubber base mouse, I think they're like two, three hundred bucks.
Okay.
One thing I, I wanted to ask the board also, and I don't know, I mean, do you think that, does it change anything when it comes to travel patterns? Like, when you're out? Does, does it change anything if there's just the signs that are like on a pole where it says crosswalk, or do people barely pay attention? Or are those already there?
Yeah, we have modified poles.
Oh, okay, so this discussion was just for the one in the center?
In the center to make it stand out a bit more.
Oh, okay, I thought it was completely unmarked, other than the lines on the road. My apologies, I'm sorry. Oh, it is? So there's not the signs that are up on a pole? It's just the, the lines in the road?
In that area.
Yeah.
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 But I think that if you drive down Main Street, if you're going westbound, you cannot see the total crosswalk sign there going across to the park, the, uh, the trail. That it, it's blocked because there's people that have higher cars and vehicles. And if we had a sign on the left, right, like a two-sided sign, one on that, as, as you drive down the road, it's easier when you drive down the road to look, 'cause you have a better view to the left than you do straight ahead. And I think if we put a, put one on the left, which means that on both sides, where there's a yield sign for traffic, there'd be one on each side. So that when you see it, it just, it's, it just gets, it's encumbered, because you can't, you can't really get clear to your right there, and that's where the biggest problem is. I've heard, I've been behind people, and I said, that, God, I didn't even see it, didn't even see it, didn't even see it. We got these great big signs, but I think they're being blocked because they're on the wrong side, they should be on the left side, too. And I, I think we should double up on those signs. I'd like to try it at a, at a couple intersections, just to see what works, especially downtown. When you get that cars parked on both sides, if you're coming westbound, you cannot see that one on the right very clear. I just think we need, I need, we need a sign.
So you guys are, I mean, the, you get, the discussion is for Maple and?
Really, it's for any of them.
That was the main one, though.
The bigger, I mean, the most busy one is obviously Maple and East Capital. Um, the problem is that when you have signs every ten feet, then people don't pay attention to them. Um, and that crosswalk was barely utilized, we did monitor it for some time, and it was barely utilized. Um, and then I did just wanna correct some information, just so you guys know, too, as far as accidents and what we've had there. Um, since nineteen eighty-one, there's been a total of nine accidents, um, and only three from two thousand fourteen. Um, and we couldn't find any that involved pedestrians, uh, and that was just us like utilizing our track system, and that's, that we've been using since two thousand ten. So since then, we haven't had any, uh, we couldn't find any pedestrians that would have been hit in that area. So we did monitor that crosswalk, and there was, it was barely used, most people cross at East Capital and Maple. So again, uh, I, I do like the center signs, um, I think that works really well, but then we pick them up in winter. And, uh, people are coming to a stop at East Cap and Maple, so typically they do see the crosswalk, uh, it's more visible, obviously.
What are your thoughts about the one by the railroad?
Um, oh, yeah, well, two things. You guys mentioned taking, taking the crosswalks off. If the ones, the crosswalks are still on Maple and Warren, we can still enforce the law. So just because there's no sign doesn't mean we can't enforce it, um, if the crosswalk is still there, right? Um, as far as the one on Cottonwood by the tracks, that one is a dangerous one, to be honest, it's very, it's very close to, too close to the, like you guys said. You guys are right on, as far as, it's right there by the hill, um, and people going the speed limits, um, it's gonna be kind of a, a really, really fast stop for them to stop in time, so. And there is one just, just on the north side of that intersection.
Right, have we had any pedestrians hit there in the past?
Not that I know of.
I don't remember, but I'm, I'm just worried, because people are getting stupider by the day, as far as driving, and they're on their phones more, and they're not paying attention, and.
Yeah.
I just hate to wait until somebody gets killed before we do something about it.
Could, could we get, and I don't even know what this comes out of, I don't know whether we can just dip into, uh, it's not contingency. What is it that we would dip into, and if someone's like, okay, let's put these signs?
Depends what you're gonna say.
Well, no, I mean, for putting those, anyways.
I'm curious how much money this.
I don't know what it is. So I think that the next step would be, I mean, obviously, it sounds, to me, it sounds like there's a lot of people that are like, we wanna make sure people don't get hurt. We're looking, it sounds like we do actually have an issue here, where we gotta look at some things with crosswalks, where some of them are unsafe, um, and we wanna make sure they're marked. And I guess I'm wondering if somehow we can just find out what the costs are, I don't know exactly what it costs for the square metal signs, putting those up, and what is the cost of the, yeah. No, that's square metal ones that you would put on a pole, that is, shows the crosswalk symbol.
Wood Avenue, by the time you come over that curb, you know, if you're looking for that sign, it's pretty, it might be.
Get rid of it, I mean, what is, is there a procedure to, or we can't do that?
I wasn't referring to getting rid of that one. I was referring to, uh, Warren and Maple, um, seeing what are, what is the, what's the cost of a sign? What's the cost of a standard crosswalk sign, just a metal one? Also, what's the cost of the one that goes in the middle, including taking the time? Because then I feel like we can make a more, uh, realistic, uh, you know, decision. If it's, if it's three grand to put a sign up, it's different than, you know.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, you go over, out to Wachshak County, they have those flashing signs, and there's oodles of stuff you can do.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, we, we can, we can task Public Works looking into the cost of the signage. It's hard, you know, we can put the middle signs in, and they, they said they would do them, they'd be willing to put them all the way down Maple if we wanted. The problem is now and through March, you don't have those signs.
So what we're discussing is Maple Avenue and Warren. So if you wanna put signs up, it's probably gonna be with the post and sign about a hundred bucks, versus a three to four hundred for the rubber-mounted middle ones.
Okay, well, I guess you don't, see, I figured that you'd basically know, so.
There's a sign there. Isn't there a sign there?
Nope, that's the one we're discussing, is Maple and, I believe it's Warren intersection.
Just have the walkway painted.
That we just have the painted walkway, correct. And then, I know you jumped over to Cottonwood now, to get, to get rid of the Cottonwood crosswalk that's right over on the, on the north side of the tracks, you have to realize, if you take away the paint.
You have to do the curb.
You still have to do the island that the railroad company put in.
And the curbs on both sides, and the sidewalks on both sides. So that one's gonna cost something.
That's gonna cost some money.
We have to redo that, oh, why, does it go through the island?
Yes, 'cause if there's a hole in the island, and there's the tapered crosswalks, even if there's no paint on there, they're gonna utilize it.
I understand, I understand. I got you. Well. I know originally, the one that we had been brought up, and the one that the citizen had brought up, was Warren Maple. So I think it's good to continue on the discussion, especially like you brought up, seeing that one that's on Cottonwood, that's something we can keep on looking into. That sounds like that's gonna be very in-depth. So to take them one at a time, you've kind of addressed, we're looking at about a hundred bucks a sign. If we were to put a, the yellow, and I think you guys know which one I mean, I'm talking about the sign that.
Right.
I think it's put up in a diagonal form, so it looks like a diamond, but it shows, I believe it shows a woman with a purse on her, it's a stick person, but she's got a purse and she's walking her kid. That's the crosswalk sign.
So.
If I'm not mistaken, that's the crosswalk sign.
So DPW wants to know what the recommendation is. Do you want the sign up, or do you want a, a one in the middle of the road?
Do both, we'll do both in the spring. Well, we, we, as a staff level, we can talk about it, and we can put up something and try it.
To go off of what Ryan's saying, we can keep that sign for a long time, right? Once we do purchase those signs that go in the middle, I mean, we can keep that, even if we decided to remove it from that location, right?
For about one semi hit.
Well, a couple, they bounce, they bounce.
They're pretty durable.
But, all right.
Uh, we've gotten comments.
I agree with Ryan.
On Capitol, it slowed traffic down, you know, having those all in the middle, so.
We just, you just have to take consideration, on Maple, if you put a center one in, if you have leaf piles or snow piles, I don't know if a garbage truck will get through without hitting it. We'd have to do some measuring on that.
But like you said, I don't, in winter, we take them all away anyway. Once those, once those, the, the street signs that are on the side of the road that show you the, the pedestrian, we have one right out front here, people just look at you like. We, we had somebody swear in an officer, because he walked through a crosswalk, a week ago, two weeks ago.
About that.
No, I believe, I mean, I do the same thing, I just walk out in front, 'cause if you get in front of them, they slow down faster than if you stand on the side waiting, but.
When people see the sign in the middle of the road, that's when they'll tend to, it's a state law, you must see the pedestrian.
Right, right.
That really gets people to think about stopping, they still don't always stop.
So I kind of, not kind of, I, I like Ryan's recommendation of saying, let's just do it, let's get the one in the middle, we had some people from, and let's get the two, you know, one facing one way, one facing the other, whether we gotta put a pole up, or if we could just get it on a pole, I don't know what the jurisdiction is on where the sign exactly has to be. But if, if we could do that, then we'll kinda.
It might be spring.
That's fine.
I'm guessing you're not pounding in right now.
Right.
That's fine.
We can still get them in, just on frost.
Well, hopefully, maybe there's another pole there that, that you wrap around.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Just another thing for the list, no, thank you very much, thank you. Um, since we aren't, I don't believe we're gonna make any type of motion, you'll have to give that direction, it's well under the mountain, you'll have to give that direction tomorrow.
Do you guys wanna crosswalk in a couple months back on an agenda, maybe in spring to visit?
Yes.
All right, sure.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
But do you like in April?
Yeah, April's good. We can't do anything about them now.
Uh, why don't we do May, so we can see what it's like having them in? 'Cause they won't go in, I think, until March or April, right? I just wanna make sure they've got some time to be in, see if it's making a difference.
Generally, they won't, 'cause other, like, right now, they won't, they're not gonna keep taking them out and putting them in, just because of, like, today, they would have to take it out, 'cause we could've got snow today, so.
April's fine, if we need to wait for more info, we can always push.
Hopefully, May, I got May.
All right. Anybody else have any other discussion items on the crosswalks? No? All right. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to declare the two thousand eight Ford MedTech ambulance as surplus.
So, do you wanna mention anything? So this, this ambulance was replaced approximately a year and a half ago. It was being held as a reserve, um, in case we needed it, in case there were, there were discussions of something going somewhere, but, you know, Chief has just decided now is the time to sell it on Wisconsin surplus.
Or if it's any older, I'd like to.
How do you think we'll do, okay?
It's hard to say, it's, you know, it's used fire equipment is very reasonable.
Very.
Very, very.
If you're the buyer.
Right, if you're the buyer, very, very reasonable, um, unfortunately, compared to the cost of a new one.
Right.
I just don't wanna get past that January mark, and it, then it's gonna be another year older.
Right.
Most likely this will be purchased by a private, I'm guessing.
Private ambulance services, usually, we've got a great reputation of our maintenance program and keeping them clean and washed and salt, you know, rust-free, so I'm hoping. I, I don't wanna put a number on it.
Right, no, I hope, I hope. You're hoping we get as much as we can get.
Right, you bet, you bet.
I'll make the motion to declare the two thousand eight Ford MedTech ambulance as surplus.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to, uh, declare the two thousand eight Ford MedTech ambulance as surplus in the cell on Wisconsin surplus. Um, sorry, any discussion? I lost it for a second there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we have announcements. Does anybody on the board have any announcements?
The holiday train went very well. We collected a lot of food. We collected a lot of money. I was very pleased with the turnout. I was pleased with the people. Um, the way all of us worked together, the fire department, DPW, thank you so much. You guys did a lot of work that nobody sees and, um, did a great job. A lot was put on you guys this year and every year, and I don't think a lot of people realize how many man hours, um, the DPW actually works on this holiday train and collecting food and putting up snow fences and keeping things in order and picking up garbage. And so you guys did a great job. Uh, the police department did a phenomenal job. Fire department, everybody, the, everybody worked together really well and everything, everything worked this year very, very well.
I thought it was fantastic.
It was a great event and there was a lot of organizations that were involved with it and did a great job.
Yeah, the Chamber, I forgot Chamber, that's a big one.
Chamber, the bid, the private businesses that all brought the food. It was just, everybody came together.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
All the people bringing in the food, dumping in those barrels at the different businesses and locations. So it was good.
And then we had the tree lighting this weekend, which was another beautiful event. A lot of people turned out.
Yeah, it seemed like there was a good showing for that.
Yeah.
Quite a few people and they got to go to different businesses and do all kinds of different activities, ride the trolley, that kind of thing. Any other announcements? Do you guys have anything? So the, uh, just to keep us all on track here to the entire village, thank you for making everything wonderful. Honestly, the holiday train and, and, and the, uh, you know, uh, the lighting of the tree, uh, doing Heartland lights and, and everything everybody does around the village. It does really take everybody to be able to do that. And it, and it was just really cool to see so many people. I'm sure a lot of them were from outside of Heartland, which is a testament to everybody here, but a lot of people from outside of Heartland come in to see some of these things. So, um, I think it's great. Uh, the village board meeting will be, uh.
Monday, December 30th.
On the 30th, but that actually, am I wrong? That that carries us into an odd time slot? Or is that right on track?
It's not. It's just one week later. Our normal board meeting is the 23rd.
Okay, that's what I thought. So this would actually be the fifth Monday of the month instead of the fourth. So the board meeting typically would fall on the second and fourth Monday of every month. This time we have postponed because of, of, uh, Christmas. We have pushed our meeting back one week, so it'll actually be on December 30th. So if you come here on the fourth Monday of the month, which would be Christmas Eve Eve, we will not be here. It will be locked, most likely unless someone else is here. So, uh, just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas to, well, you, you can say it. Ryan has some announcements.
Nope, I'm good. I'll say it. Merry Christmas to everybody, because we're not going to be able to say that before Christmas.
Yes. I don't mind, I just, I wanted Ryan to.
I did.
Really just pump it up.
Nope.
Put on the Santa hat and.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for everything they do to make this village great. This is a time of giving and we really, I mean, Donna, I, sorry, Trusty Doro, I believe it was 7,200 pounds of food.
Yes.
Yes. It's pretty cool. So Merry Christmas, everyone.
We did?
And a Happy New Year. I don't know. I don't know. It's not happening again.
I think we would have won this year. We could have won.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
At this time, I make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.